Blessing to me, and I know that's why you're here tonight. Many of you have been here for every service, and you've got the spiritual goodness from that. God met with you, and your hearts have been touched by the Spirit of the Lord, and that's a good thing. Don't let it end just because tonight is the last evening. It doesn't have to end. You can continue to trust me, as she sang. You can continue to trust the Lord to breathe His life into you on a daily and ongoing basis, and I hope you'll do that, as we've learned this week. Brother Van Gelderen is, of course, not a stranger to us here at Bethel. As he said, this is the seventh time that we've had him with us. And if you want to mark it down, he's going to be with us the first week of June in 2024, two years from now. We've already settled that. So you can mark that, block that week off, and join us again for a time in God's Word. I'm going to ask him to come now and share with us what the Lord has laid on his heart.
All right. Thank you so much. John 15 in your Bibles tonight, John, chapter 15. I'll mention just a few more books that I've not yet touched on. There's a couple of copies left of the book called Friendship with the Holy Spirit. I've had this year before. It does have a new cover. So it's one of those that we change the cover so you think you don't have it. At any rate, there is a chapter in this book that deals with discerning the Holy Spirit as our guide. In other words, how do you know the difference between the Holy Spirit's leading in your life and your own strong desire? You ever faked yourself out? You wanted something so bad, you know, ah, this is God, when it wasn't God, and then you crashed and burned? Yeah, I've been there. I don't like that, but we need to know the difference. How do you know the difference between the Holy Spirit and counterfeit, the enemy, coming as an angel of light? Well, the Bible gives us many principles in the written Word that form the plum line of truth, so that we can discern the way of the Holy Spirit versus the way of the enemy. And so there is a chapter that goes into that in great detail. Couple of revival accounts in the book as well. There's the book called The Faith Response. You know, your view of faith affects everything. So we need to understand what faith is, how it operates. The first chapter goes into God's economy of divine initiation, the faith response, and divine enabling that we talked about with the men on Saturday morning. Second chapter is more of the definition of faith, and then the rest of the book begins to apply it. How do you possess facts? How do you obtain promises? Couple of chapters on the prayer of the faith from James 5, and then a final chapter on the increase of faith. And it's more of the mechanics of faith, what it is and how it operates. And when it comes to just an illustration of faith, there is the biography of my dear grandmother. It's called The Prayer That Makes a Difference. And a dear lady in one of our meetings in Phoenix, Arizona, who has a publishing house and has written a couple of books, wrote this biography of my grandmother, and just illustrations of faith. Now, let me just say this. When you read a book like this, sometimes we just, we kind of put these people in a different league. No, if you knew my grandmother, I knew her. She was as down to earth as they come. I mean, she laughed at jokes, she cracked jokes, she giggled. You know, in the heavenly realm, this is what I've observed. In the heavenly realm, those that live in that heavenly realm, in the heavenly realm, they're in that spiritual realm, and they're in the heavenlies. But in the earthly realm, they're down to earth. And when people in the earthly realm put on a pious facade, it's not the same thing. But at any rate, she was very down to earth, and yet lived in that spiritual realm, and saw remarkable, God-honoring answers to prayer all the time. I remember her little face when she would pray. We'd go see her down in Miami, Florida, and Dad would ask her to pray. He had the family devotions. He figured that would count. And so I remember that she was the only one that prayed in those family times. But I would peek, you know, I just got this problem about peeking during prayer meeting. And her little face was turned straight toward heaven. That glow of God. And she started talking to God, the tears would just roll. "God, there's nothing too hard for you." And she started talking to God. And so those stories of just regular people that learn to trust in an extraordinary God give us hope. There is a bookmark on the table that connects to a website that has a tremendous book. I have a dear friend named Jonathan Bishop. His pen name is J.B. Shepard. He's a missionary over in Jordan at the moment. He's headed to the country of Yemen. And he's learning the language, and he's written an allegory on salvation, and it's written for youth. I read it and was riveted. It's beautifully done, beautiful allegory on the matter of salvation. Called The Anger of the Kingdom with God's Wrath Being Propitiated. He's got a second volume coming out, a sequel on the spirit-filled life in allegory form for teenagers. And so you take one of those bookmarks if you're interested. Well, it is a joy to have been back here at Bethel. Looking forward to being back in two years, as was mentioned. And I do appreciate the hungry hearts. You know, hunger makes a difference. If people aren't hungry, then you know, you just, you know, you wash the servant off the back wall. I've done that in a few meetings, but at any rate, it's been wonderful to have hungry hearts. And you know, I grew up in Chicago. I enjoy city churches. You people understand fast-paced living, which means you can understand fast-paced thinking, so I can talk fast. Except for Anastasia told me, "You're talking too fast for me." But I do appreciate your willingness to think through the concepts of the Scripture, and to chew on them, and to come back and ask a question or that kind of thing. It's just been wonderful. It's just a delightful audience to preach to. And your pastor is one of my dearest friends, one of my truest friends. And I thank the Lord for him. Many times I've said to Mary Lynn, I thank you. I just so appreciate Jim Bickel. And so it's been a joy to be back, brother. And Nancy, thank you for playing for Mary Lynn. I just precious to have that as well, and it's been good to be here in these days. Well, tonight, John, chapter 15. Last couple of nights, we've looked at a lot of accounts, a lot of detail. Tonight, I want us to step back and see one of the beautiful pictures of what we're talking about, kind of from start to finish. And so we're going to go to John 15. This is in the middle of that discourse on the Holy Spirit, just before Jesus goes to the cross, as he's speaking with his disciples. This is dear on his heart. He's just a few hours away from the cross. And so John 15, what a passage this is. And he says in verse 1, "I am the true vine." And my Father is the husbandman, literally the vine dresser. And the Old Testament, the analogy to the vine, is applied to Israel. But in the New Testament, it is applied to individual believers. I want to speak tonight on the vine life. Again, let's ask the Holy Spirit to be our teacher. Lord, we do thank you for your goodness. Thank you, Lord, for these dear ones that have come tonight to hear from heaven. O Spirit of the living God, speak the truth into every heart and soul tonight. Lord, may we respond in faith and, Lord, in confidence in you. O Lord, take the truth far beyond these hours, Lord, into our future, and the purpose and destiny that you have for us and, Lord, for this church. Or do what man cannot do. Lord, we need that fresh breath from heaven in our own lives. We need that fresh wind of the Spirit, Lord, in our land and in our world. Lord, I pray that you would nurture faith in our hearts in a way that we would believe you for the reign of your Spirit before you come. We thank you for that. Lord, I do plead the blood of Jesus once again. Protect us from Satan's attack, who would seek to hinder. So, Lord Jesus, we claim our position in you on the throne, and in your name, exercise your authority over any powers of darkness that would seek to hinder and trust you, that that not be allowed. We claim the victory we have in Jesus and his finished work. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Several years ago, my wife and I were in the central part of California in the month of August. And the agriculture was everywhere. You could just smell it. It was so neat. You're passing all these groves and orchards, and the vineyards were everywhere, and they were loaded. I mean, you could not see the trellises. I mean, the grapes, the red grapes, the green grapes, they were just huge, and they were luscious, and it was just weighted down on the trellises that they have for them. It was beautiful to see. Now, why did Jesus choose to use that as an analogy for the spirit-filled life? It's a beautiful picture. As we look at this passage, we see several players, we might say, or factors involved, all relating to life. Obviously, there's the vine. That's Jesus. And Jesus is the source of life. There's the vine dresser. That's the Father. He is the nurturer of life. And then there is implied the sap. That's the Holy Spirit. He is the agent of life. Then, of course, there's the branch. That's you. That's the believer in Jesus, the channel of life. Then there is the fruit. Emphasized in this passage, love, the manifestation of life. And then there is abiding dependence, the access to life. All of these factors are related to life. You see, we're dealing with the vine life. And as we look at this passage, we see the simplicity that abiding in Christ accesses the life of the vine. But what is involved in abiding in Christ? So we look at the text tonight and look to the Spirit tonight. I want us to note three observations. First of all, the focus. That's a word we've used a couple of times this week. The focus of abiding is a relationship ultimately with the triune God, which we see here in the text itself. In other words, abiding is not ritualistic. It is relational. And the focus of abiding, therefore, is in a person. It's in the person of God, God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. Now, focus is important because the key to faith is the object of faith. And the object of faith is God. We're the subject of faith. The key is not us. Praise the Lord for that. The key is the object of faith. And so focus is important because you've got to look unto Jesus. You've got to focus on Jesus, and that is when faith is authored in our hearts. And we see all three persons of the Godhead here in this picture. Jesus is mentioned there in verse 1. "I am the true vine." Here we see the last of the seven "I am" claims. "I am," he says, "the true vine." And so life is in the vine. Life is in Christ because Jesus is the vine, and he is both the source and the goal of life. So obviously, we need to look to Jesus as life. And then we see the Father. "And my Father is the vine dresser, the husbandman, the vine dresser, and he is the one who cultivates and nurtures life." So we look to the Father to nurture life. And then, of course, the Holy Spirit, who are implied here in this passage as the sap, the one, the agent who imparts to us the life, who brings that life of Jesus right into us as the branch, so that fruit might be born. And so we look to the Spirit to impart life. Now, much of the passage explains the role of Jesus, the vine, and the Holy Spirit, the agent. But before it does, it concisely explains the role of the Father, which we often overlook. And I don't want to do that tonight because it's beautiful and it's powerful, and it's found here in verse 2. After he says, "My Father is the vine dresser," he says in verse 2, "Every branch in me that beareth not fruit he taketh away." He, the Father, the nurturer, the cultivator, the vine dresser, take it away. "And every branch that beareth fruit he purgeth it, that it may bring forth more fruit." So he's telling us what the vine dresser does. And there's two parts, as you see there in verse 2. There's two methods to the Father's, to the vine dresser's vine dressing, to his nurturing or cultivating life in the vine. First of all, he lifts up God's way of dealing with sin that hinders. Now, go to verse 2. It says, "Every branch in me that beareth not fruit he taketh away." Basically speaking, in the study of this, there's three different views as to what this means. One view is, well, these people just aren't saved, so they're out of here. "He taketh away." I don't believe that because it says, "Every branch in me." If he was referring to unsaved, he could just left the "in me" out of this. But the inspired text says, "Every branch in me." You can't be in Christ and not be saved. We saw the other night in Galatians 3 that when you believe on Jesus, you're placed, you're baptized into Christ, which means you're saved. So for it to say, "Every branch in me," there's no way this could be referring to unsaved people. How can a branch, which must of necessity in the very picture have life from the vine, not be saved? But it is one view that's out there. A second view is that this is the judgment seat. Here, "take it away" would be interpreted as the wood, hay, and stubble, which will be exposed, as we see in 1 Corinthians 3, when it's put to the test of fire, as not passing the test, and it will be incinerated and burned up. All those people are saved. They're saved yet so as by fire. Now, that's true. That's the position I took in my first book called Engine Truths, written back in the 1990s, but I reserve the right to disagree with myself. In other words, to grow in understanding, and so I do disagree with myself. That's why that book's not out there anymore. It is true, the judgment seat, all that's going to happen. You know, whatever is not Christ but us, it goes up in smoke. That's true, but I don't think anymore that that's what this verse is talking about. The third view is the idea that the vine dresser lifts up and cleanses. Here, the word that is translated "take it away" is interpreted in its optional dictionary or lexical sense, which is to lift up. Obviously, different words. Sometimes there's multiple meanings, and the usage determines which one. Okay. Do you know that that word is translated over in Matthew 14, verse 20, when Jesus fed the 5,000, and they had the disciples go through, and they took up, same word. They lifted up. They took up. They saved, not took away and threw away. They saved the 12 baskets of fragments that were left. The same word is used in Matthew 27, Crucifixion account, verse 32, when Simon was compelled to bear, that's the word, the cross. That's not to take away the cross. That's to carry. So more your lift-up sense. So we can see that, yes, this very word can be used in our New Testament in the lift-up sense. Now, it's the analogy that I think demands the lift-up sense, and our problem is, we're not an agricultural culture much anymore, and so we don't understand. But when Bruce Wilkinson wrote his book, The Secrets of the Vine, he tells the story of being out in California, just like we were, and he was talking to a vine dresser out there and asking him some questions about it. And the vine dresser said to him, "New branches." Now, this is fascinating. "New branches have a natural tendency to trail downward and grow along the ground," he said, "but they don't bear fruit down there." When the branches grow along the ground, he says, "The leaves get coated in dust, and then when it rains, they get muddy, and they get mildewed, and the branch then becomes sick and useless." So Wilkinson said, "Well, what do you do? Cut it off and throw it away?" Because that's the common thought that we have. And the vine dresser said, "Oh, no. The branch is much too valuable for that." We go through the vineyard, and I love this, with a bucket of water, looking for those branches, and we lift them up, and we washed them off. Then we wrap them around the trellis and tie them up, and pretty soon, they are thriving. So how does this work? Well, the Father values his children. He values believers. He values, in the picture here, the branches. And sometimes we ignore our provision. Sometimes, though we have a spirit that's regenerated with the DNA of God and all that, we ignore it all, and we trail downward. And though we're not dirt balls in our heart, we get in the dirt. Ever been there? And that's when, you know, we get muddy and dirty and mildewed and sick and useless for the cause of Christ. So what does he do? How does he lift us up? He awakens us. You ever have a convicting moment? When the Spirit of God just arrests your attention with, "What are you doing?" See, he's awakening you. And in that moment of awakening and conviction, you have the opportunity to get on us and say, "You're right. I'm wrong." And immediately, he washes you. He cleanses you. I have a dear preacher friend who said that he and his wife were in a hotel in a meeting, and his wife was taking a shower, and he was flipping through the channels on the TV. And he said the next thing he knew, he was watching something that he shouldn't have been, and he had that awakening moment. Thankfully, he said it came quickly. "What are you doing?" And immediately, he sided with God. The blood cleansed. That was turned off, and he was back up on the trellis. Do you get it? That's what God does to us. Now, friends, I fear that in our culture, we've gotten far too desensitized on the sin stuff. We've rationalized a lot of stuff. And we allow far too much. And yes, yes, we can get right with God, yah, 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 but we're allowing way too much. And you know, maybe it would be appropriate for us as American Christians to say, "God, would you sensitize me again? Lord, make me sensitive. Don't let me go down that path. Awaken me right away so I don't get down and muddied and mildewed and sick and useless." The truth is, the Father comes through, and he awakens us. And in that awakening moment, he's holding us up so that we can own it. And as soon as we own it and confess our sins, then the blood of Jesus comes in and washes us and cleanses us, and so we can get back to fruit-bearing and thriving once again. So there's the first method of the vine dresser. He lifts us up. That's how he deals with sin that hinders. But the second method is pruning. This is God's way of dealing with self that also hinders. Notice, he says, "and every branch that beareth fruit." So here's the implication. In the first phrase, he lifts us up so that we start bearing fruit. When we do, "and every branch that beareth fruit," see, that's the flow-out here, "now he prunes it, that it may bring forth more fruit." Now, this is a little bit harder for us to understand. The sin stuff, I think, we can understand because we know that's a problem. That makes sense to us, but what about the self stuff? Yes, the vine dresser lifts us up. He washes us so that we begin to bear fruit. But when we begin to bear fruit, if we're not careful, we become too prominent. And now the wood starts growing instead of all the energy of God going to the fruit, we might say. Self becomes too prevalent, and it becomes a hindrance. My dear brother-in-law, oh, this is 20-some years ago, or more than that. I based out of Ann Arbor Baptist Church. They built a new building, just on the edge of town in Ann Arbor, and about 40 acres. They went to buy five, ended up buying 40. It's a gorgeous piece of property right on the edge of Ann Arbor, and built a beautiful building. And my brother-in-law, he can build anything. He can do anything. You know, I can't do any of that stuff. You know, I can't even hardly hit a nail with a hammer. But you know, he just knows how to do it all, and he's got a craftsman eye, and he understands the beauty of building and so forth, and it's a beautiful building. And my father had come to see it. So this must have been before '97, because my dad died in '97. And he came to see it, and so Gary was showing him around, and it was just the two of them, and the auditorium, and so on, and there's a beautiful chandelier at the entrance, and just, it's beautiful. Well, Gary had gone down the hallway to use the restroom, and when he came back out, he was coming back down the hallway, he said, "Your dad had to have known I was in the hallway." And he said he had his hands kind of behind him like this, you know, his pockets or whatever, looking up and everything, and he made a comment without looking at Gary. He just sat as he looked at all the building and said, loud enough for Gary to hear it, "Ah, too much Gary." I said, "Gary, what did you do? Did you ask him what he meant?" He said, "No, I was afraid to." Now, years later, when God brought my brother-in-law down a revival road, it hit him. My father understood. There was too much of the insertion of Gary life. And my dad was actually being used of God to snip it. See, the Father prunes. What happens is, we get too much self. It might be good stuff. You know, it's building a church building. But self-will is in the way of God's will. It's the wrong leader. And self-dependence, self-power is in the way of God dependence for God's power. It's all self. The fact is, self-will is in the way of the leader, the real leader, and self-power is in the way of the real power source. And friends, we know how to go through the motions. We know how to mimic the motions. We know how to do church. We know how to go through the motions of doing Christianity. And when it's just us, God's not in any of it. It's just the form of Godliness that denies the very power thereof. You know, that's where I started. You know, I got saved at six, called a preacher 15, all that kind of stuff. And back on staff with my dad in Chicago for five years, hit the road in '92. And man, I'm telling you, I had, you know, I had to do church, do Christianity thing down. It was very ritualistic. It was what I dealt with Sunday morning. It was all about the outcome. It was all about the list, you know, give me the do's, give me the don'ts. And boy, that list just got longer and longer. And when God began to awaken me, good night. I'm going to tell you something. I'm a recovering Pharisee. But see, that's what has to happen. The vine gesture comes through and snips. That self-will, that self-power that needs to be cut away. And the pruning sometimes is ruthless. Cutting away the unnecessary wood so that the sap goes to the fruit and not the wood. See, that's the point in the actual picture of the vine. I told you about seeing those vineyards in California in August. Well, we were in California one time in February. Man, all you saw was the trellis. It didn't even look like there was a vine there. They had cut it back so much, you had to get up close to see that there was still a vine. I mean, they'd cut those branches back and back and back and back. It was ruthless. But that's what it takes to have that lush harvest in the summertime. And friends, God is willing to cut back the self-life so that the energy can go to the fruit and not be lost in the wood. And you know, when that pruning happens, that cleansing, that purging of self, sometimes when it's happening, you feel like, man, like all is lost. But it's so that more can be gained. It hurts. Yes, it hurts. The older I get, the more it hurts. Because the deeper it goes, you know, some of us are like an onion. There's lots of layers. Oh, my goodness. And some of these layers have really hurt. But you know what? It's because of the love of the vine dresser. It's the love of the Father for his children. That is in the way. That is hindering your purpose, snip. And God knows how to do it. But here's the encouragement. It says in verse 2 that he prunes, "that it may bring forth more fruit." And if you find yourself in one of those painful, hurting, pruning seasons, get excited and start looking to God and rejoicing in God, because he said, "More fruit is coming." And that is a rema. That is a sure word and promise of God. You can start rejoicing. So we begin with the focus of abiding. It's on the triune God. Now, let's go from the right focus to the right faith. If we have the focus on the right object of faith, and that leads to faith, looking unto Jesus, the author and finisher of our faith. And so now we go to the faith of abiding, and we see here the responsibility of God dependence. Now, I remember when I was in graduate school, I got to looking at this passage. God stirred me about so when I was in graduate school. It was really neat because I had... It was really neat, because I had gone soul winning for years, because I'm a preacher's kid. But I just did it because I was a preacher's kid. You know, duty demands it. And so I did. Oh, man, it was just sheer grit, your teeth go, alright, we gotta go. Okay, let's go. Alright. And so that's what I would do. I'm just being honest with you. But in graduate school, God stirred me. I went to a conference. And there was a man named Mike Smith. I hadn't seen him for years. But he pastors now in Alabama. But God used that guy. At the time, he was a janitor buster director at the church that was hosting this conference. But he had a session, and there was fire in that man's heart, and it jumped into mind. I thank God for him. And that's when I got stirred to actually want to go soul winning. I still didn't understand faith, but at least now I wanted to go. Whereas before, I didn't really. And so that was a good thing. And so, in that same time period, I thought, well, you know, how do you actually win souls? How do you actually become effective? And I looked at this passage. And it says, "When you abide in Christ, he abides in you." And when he abides in you, it says, "You bear much fruit." Well, now I actually wanted to bear fruit. I thought, wow, look at this. He says, "Abide in me and I in you, because he abides in me, and I in him, the same brings forth much fruit." I thought, wow, there it is. And then I remember scratching my head thinking, hmm, I wonder what it means to abide. So I looked it up in some commentaries. That's what, you know, seminary students do. They all disagreed. So that was a big help. And I wondered for years, what does it mean to abide? Now, it doesn't have to take years. The passage itself here is very definitive. When we look at this matter of abiding in Christ, and this matter of God dependence, how do we come to that? Well, very clearly, the passage makes it very clear that we're not dealing with flesh dependence. We're not dealing with self-effort. Look at verses four and five. Jesus says, "Abide in me, and I in you, as the branch cannot. It is not able to bear fruit of itself or from itself, except or unless it abides in the vine, no more can ye accept ye abide in me. I am the vine, ye're the branches. He that abideth in me and I in him, the same bringeth forth much fruit, for without me ye can do nothing." He makes it very clear, the branch can't do this on its own. So self-dependence, flesh dependence is not gonna cut it. I remember years ago, I was in a meeting, small church out in the country. And came in to the little tiny lobby that they had, very small lobby. And a lady was coming up to her pastor, and she had a little booklet in her hand. It was actually written by Bill Bright. And it was dealing with the matter of abiding. And she was so excited. She said, "Pastor, pastor." She said, "This author says that abiding means dependence, dependence on Jesus." She said, "Is that what it means?" Now look, why was she so excited? Because if abiding means dependence, you can do it. See, the one thing we can do is faith. Because faith is saying, "God, I can't do it, so I'm gonna trust you." That's the one thing we can do. And so she said, "Is this what it means? Does abiding mean dependence?" And I'm sitting there thinking, "Yes!" But before I could say yes, the pastor said, "No!" He said, "It just means just obey." And I walked out of there, and walked out in that front yard of that church, and said, "Oh, God." That's the wrong answer. Now what do I do? Well, the next night, I preached on Galatians 2:20. Some of you may remember a message where I used an illustration about staying in the basket, which is a picture of abiding. So I barely mentioned the word abide, but that's what it's dealing with. So, at the end of the message, she comes running out. She comes running up to me. She goes, "I knew it, I knew it, I knew abide meant dependence." I won't tell you the rest of the story. But any rate, the Bible makes it very clear here, no, the branch can't do this on its own. It cannot. You see, the just-obey mentality ignores Jesus. And anytime you ignore Jesus, you don't have the right theology. And so, you're not abiding in Christ if you ignore Jesus. So it's not flesh dependence, that's deception, nor is it fatalism. There are those who have written books that say that if you're saved, then you're abiding. That abiding is the characteristic of all believers. So it becomes inevitable or fatalistic, which causes Christians to just become passive. Faith is act of cooperation. Passivity is deception. And that theology ignores the imperative. In the whole passage here about the vine, there's only two imperatives. And one of them is in verse four, "Abide in me." Now, if everybody's abiding automatically, then that wouldn't make sense to have an imperative. And so that theology ignores the imperative. So it's not flesh dependence, it's not fatalism, it is faith. And God taught me this in the 90s through a little book called The Threefold Secret of the Holy Spirit by James McConkey. He was using a passage over in 1 John 3. But it's right here in John 15. It's also in John 6. Let's look at it again. He says, "Abide in me and I in you," verse four, "as the branch cannot. Bear fruit of itself, except it abide in the vine, no more can ye accept ye abide in me. I am the vine, ye're the branches. He that abideth in me and I in him, the same bringeth forth much fruit, for without me, without me, ye can do nothing," which means with me, you can do everything you ought to do. See, it's pointing out, depend on me, the vine! He's defining the word abide by the very wording that he used. "You're not able on your own, without me you can do nothing," which means with me, trusting me, depending on me, abiding in me. Yes, you can bear fruit and do everything that you ought to do. So there it is. Abiding is God dependence. So that's abiding in Christ. Well, what about Him abiding in us? I remember when God taught me that, I was so thrilled, because wow, what a blessing. Because, you know, "Abide in me and I in you." And I thought, okay, so now we got the first half of this. "Abide in me," that's faith, that's dependence. Then I thought, well, how do I abide in you? Well, later, God used a little book called The True Vine by Andrew Murray. You know, it's just printed preaching. God uses the foolishness of preaching. And he pointed out that we have to make the conscious choice to depend on Jesus. That's how we abide in Him. That part is not automatic. We have to make that choice. But when we do, what is automatic is He abides in us. See, in John 6, the analogy is food, true bread from heaven. And again, the word abide is used in that passage. And so just like with food, we depend, we abide in food, we depend on food by what? Eating it. Boy, I have been enjoying the food in New York City. Ah, yes. And so, what have I been doing? I've been abiding. I've been abiding in the food. And then, well, what, you know, why do we eat? Because we have to, and we like to. But you know what? We gotta make that conscious choice to put the food in our mouth. But once we do, it immediately starts nourishing. It abides in us. See, when you abide in Christ, that's the choice of faith. But when you do, He immediately abides in you. That's grace. See, the way we abide in Christ is God dependence. The way He abides in us is spirit enablement. That's how all of this works. That's the Spirit for life. As we depend on Him, then the Spirit imparts to us the very life. See, we're talking about life. He imparts to us the life of Jesus, the life of the vine, the Spirit, the sap, brings that very life of Jesus right into us and threw us out to others. You see, there it is. That's how He abides in us. See, spiritual ministry demands spiritual energy, human ability. Cannot do divine work. The branch cannot bear fruit of itself. The self-life cannot bear fruit of itself. That's all the futility of the flesh. But friends, when you abide in Christ, then He abides in you. And the Spirit imparts to you that very life of the vine. And now there's a supernatural dynamic in a human channel called a branch. And that's how this fruit is born. Hallelujah. So, the focus of abiding is on God, the faith of abiding is dependence. And now thirdly, the fruit of abiding is love, primarily. As we'll see here, this is verse nine down to verse 17. I won't take time to read all of that. But there's a what to this, and there's a how to this. So let's look at it. Inherent in the very analogy is the fact that the fruit is produced, obviously, by the life of the vine, divine life. Therefore, the fruit is the manifestation of divine life. Now, the text indicates this involves two aspects. And often, in looking into this, whether it's commentaries or hearing stormings, generally, you'll hear one or the other. I personally think the text is dealing with both. It begins with what we could call the fruitful character of Christ within us. You see, when you look at verse nine, let's just go there. "As the Father hath loved me, so have I loved you." Then it says, "Continue." See that word, "continue"? That's the word abide. "In my love," there's the second imperative. And as you keep reading here, the term "love" occurs nine times. The term "joy" occurs two times. And this ought immediately bring up passage over in Galatians 5. The fruit of the Spirit is love. And since God is love, I believe that is the fruit, love. And that is expressed as joy and peace and patience and long-suffering patience, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance. In other words, that's the fruitful character of Christ. When you depend on Christ, when you abide Christ, He abides in you. When He abides in you, you're accessing His very life. And you know what? He's love, which means He's joy and peace and long-suffering and gentleness and goodness and faith and meekness and temperance, all at the same time, because He's consistent. See, when we think, well, I got this one, this one, and this one, and I don't have this one, this one, and this one, you don't have any of them. But you think you have our invitations. Friends, when you access Jesus, He's love! And that is expressed in the manifold dimensions of who He is. Wow. So if you're a crusty character, access the character of Jesus. He's not crusty. Isn't that wonderful? You know, if you are prone to irritation and anger and frustration and getting ticked off, access Jesus. Because when you access Him, He's patient, and when He's angry, it's righteous. Right? You see, we need to access Jesus. A lot of the sin issues in American culture are just cave into the flesh. It's called lack of restraint or lack of temperance. And that last expression of the love, that is the fruit, is temperance. And it's not just self-control, because the world has measures of self-control. This is spirit-energized self-control. I'll tell you, friend, if you've got poor character because of wrong choices prior to salvation and even after salvation, here's the hope. Access Jesus. He's got good character. See, when you abide, faith. He abides, grace. And when He abides, it's His life, His love. You see, the fruitful character of Jesus is now born on the branch of you. That means there is hope. So there's the fruitful character of Christ within us. But here's the second part of this. There's the fruitful ministry of Christ through us. I love this. Verse 12, this is my commandment, "That you love one another, as I have loved you." There's more detail here. But now it's His life, His love, His ministry manifested, not just to us, but through us, out to others. Over in Matthew 20, verse 28, he said, "He came not to be ministered unto, but to minister." So the reality is, when we abide in Christ, He abides in us. When He abides in us, we experience Jesus. And yet, while we experience Jesus, He is ministering to those around us. Now let me ask you a question. If you are prone to impatience and irritability and getting ticked off and being abrasive and making everybody miserable around you, and you abide, and He abides, and you experience patience, isn't that a blessing to you? And you know it. You think, wow, that was supernatural. But you know who's really blessed? Everybody around you. See, they get to eat the fruit. See, it's ministry. Yes, it's ministry of Christ in you to you, but it becomes ministry through you, toddlers. Do you see it? Friends, when there is goodness, that Jesus went about doing God. Well, when you're accessing Him, people around you get blessed. Wow. There's that aura of Jesus, that glow of Jesus, where He's shining. See, that's holiness. It's the beauty of Jesus shining through you. There's that Jesus look. I was at a meeting one time, where there was an unsaved man that had come one night, and his sister-in-law was standing next to him, and we were singing the song, "Oh, How I Love Jesus." And I went over to his house to witness to him the next day. He said, "You know, I was just stunned last night." He said, "You guys were singing that song about, you know, oh, how I love Jesus." And he said, "I looked down at my sister-in-law, and she didn't know that I was looking at her. And she was just singing with such joy and sincerity." He said, "I almost just melted in tears." That's because he just saw Jesus. That's what happened. He was being ministered unto. And then you get to verse 16. And he says, "I have chosen you, and ordained you, appointed you, that you should go and bring forth fruit." The going seems to indicate now the actual go with the power of the Spirit in the gospel for reproduction. And because it says there that ye should go and bring forth fruit. And then it says, "And that your fruit should remain." See the word "remain"? That's the word abide. You see, when you access Christ in you to you and then threw you out to others, everybody's ministered to. They get to eat that fruit. But then you go with the gospel in His power, and they get saved. And then, "And that your fruit, reproductive fruit in this sense, should remain, should abide." And the whole process starts over again with a new branch. And that's what we see in this beautiful text. So that's the what. The how is very simple. There's an inflow and there's an outflow. Verse nine says, "Abide in my love." That's for inflow. That you love one another, that's for outflow. You know, if you only have one of these, you don't have it. If you have outflow with no inflow, there's nothing flowing. That was me trying to witness without the power of the Spirit, or me trying to live right and all that without the power of God. No, there has to be inflow for there to be outflow. But when there is inflow, it's gotta have an outflow, or it becomes a dead sea. That's what the dead sea is. It's inflow with no outflow. Friends, when you abide in His love for inflow and then trust to obey for outflow, then His life flows. You know what's amazing with the gospel? I've witnessed for years. But when God began to open my eyes to accessing Jesus, all of a sudden, people started getting saved. And started going on for God. Got baptized, discipled, and started growing. And I'm sitting there thinking, wow, same gospel, different power. Radical difference, folks. Radical. All it is, is the divine life of Jesus, but that's huge! And so, that's what we need. So there's that focus of abiding, the relationship with the triune God, the faith of abiding, responsibility of God dependence, the result, or excuse me, the fruit of abiding, that result of love. Remember back in 1727, there was one of the greatest revivals ever up to that point in New Testament history. It's called the Moravian Revival. And there was a lot of dissension, a lot of bickering. They were all ticked off. And you know, here's Zinzendorf. He had gotten touched by some Spirit for Life people. They were called the Pietists in those days, but they were hoists. They were spot-on on the Spirit for Life. He got touched by them, and God began to move in His own heart. And you remember, there was persecution in Europe in those days. And so He had invited and persecuted peoples to come to His estate there, in that part of Germany, and for a place of safety. And they did. And they formed a town, and eventually it grew to about 300 people. They thought it was gonna be utopia, because these are all believers. But they're from different backgrounds, you know, some were Anabaptist, some were converted Catholics. And you know, there's different backgrounds, Lutherans and so on, from that Reformation era. And they started arguing over things like predestination. This is the honest truth, spring 1727. And some of the more noble souls said, "This thing's gonna bust up if God doesn't come down." And they began to pray. See, abiding. They began to depend. They began to call on They began to call on God. God, this thing's, you know, your testament is going to be lost here. If you don't step down, God, we need you. They began to pray. And those prayer meetings increased in intensity over the next several months. And on August the 10th, there was a prayer meeting that really was powerful. You would read it and think, wow, that's it. Well, then it got even better on August the 13th. I think it was at a Lord's Supper time, if I'm remembering correctly. And the presence of God was so manifested in their midst that they didn't know whether or not they'd already gone to heaven or were still on earth. Is how they describe it. God was that real? And you know what? The bickering stopped. And that's when they started that prayer meeting, that was, you know, one man and one lady for an hour, for 24 hours. And then they decided the next day, and then the next day, in that 24-hour prayer meeting, each in their respective spots, one man, one lady, 24 hours a day. That went on, you may know that story, for the next 100 years. It fueled, because that's faith, it fueled the beginnings of modern missions. And by the time Zinzendorf died, 33 years later, that church had grown, and they sent out missionaries, 226 missionaries in the next 33 years. Well, in the overflow of that, a guy named John Wesley came to that community. You know what his response was? Oh, how they love! Wow. I wonder what people would say, or what John Wesley would say, if he came to the American church. He said of that Moravian church, "Oh, how they love." You know what that is? That's God. That's divine life manifested. And friends, we need that divine life. We need it with each other. We need it between husbands and wives, probably in this room. We need it between parents and children in this room. We need it in the workplace with some pretty ordinary bosses. We need the love of Jesus as the fruit. Because His love melts hearts. And we live in a world of hard hearts, but none of it is beyond the love of God. Jesus said, "I am the vine, the true vine, and my Father is the vine dresser. So abide in me." Let's bow our heads for prayer. Please stay focused as we're bringing these thoughts to a verdict here. You know, early on in the message, we talked about the method of the vine dresser, the Father. He awakens. I wonder who it's a preacher. I've gotten way too desensitized. There's some stink and stench and dirt. Yeah, I know that my heart is righteous, and I'm a saint, I get that. We dealt with that Sunday. But man, oh, man, I've been wallowing down in the dirt, and I need, God's awakening me, and I need to own it and let Him wash me and put me back up on the trellis. And God's dealing with me about dealing with sin. And I know it. Would you raise the hand, please, if that's you? Yes, 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 yes. How about that second method, the pruning, the self-life? It's actually another sin, and yet it's the different emphasis. There's the obvious sins, but this is just self. Sometimes we can be going through all the motions of church and do right and live right, and this, that, and the other, but it's just self. It's the form of godliness. There is a form, yes. But it denies the power thereof, puts the focus on us. It's all about us, and we're always talking about us. And it's always about what we want, and this, that, and the other. It's couched piously because it's good things. But it's wood and not fruit. And God stands there with those clippers ready to snip. I wonder who it's a preacher. God's dealing with me about the self-issues. Too much Gary? Well, too much me, whatever your name is. God speaking to me. Would you raise the hand, please? Yes, many hands tonight. Yes, God bless. And friends, we saw the beauty, the simplicity, that the way we abide is faith, the way He abides is grace. Flesh dependence won't cut it. There has to be faith in Him. That's how this works, and that's when that fruit is born, and that fruit is love. It's Him. God is love. And that's when there's joy and peace and long-suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, and temperance, all at the same time. I wonder who it's a preacher. On the one hand, I'm thrilled about the possibilities. On the other hand, I'm convicted about the lack of love being manifested. God's speaking to me. Would you raise the hand, please? Yes, yes, many hands tonight. Thank you. One last thing. I wonder who it's a preacher. I'm not even saved. It is true that you cannot abide in the vine if you're not in the vine. You cannot abide in Christ if you're not in Christ. And you're not in Christ until you put your faith in Him as Savior from sin and hell. Young people tonight, adults tonight, men, ladies, all ages, are you born again? Have you believed not just about Jesus put in Him? Have you been convinced by the Spirit that sin is the problem, hell is the consequence, Christ alone is the answer? Have you transferred your dependence to Christ alone to save you? Have you trusted Him to do it? I wonder who it's a preacher. You know what? I never have. And it's time I get saved. God's speaking to me. Would you slip your hand up right now if that's you? Said preacher, I need to get saved. I know it. I am not yet born again. I have not yet transferred my dependence to Jesus alone to save me. Yeah, I know about Jesus, but I've never believed on Him, trusting Him to do that saving work for me once and for all. That is my need. If that's you, would you just slip your hand up, please? It's long enough for me to see it. I'll acknowledge it, and then you can slip it back down. Anyone at all? Now, Father, would you continue to speak to us? Lord, may we respond in glad surrender, glad faith. Lord, glad confidence in you based on your words. Lord, we thank you for your nurturing work, awakening us, lifting us up so that we can get honest and our blood can cleanse, and then snipping and pruning and dealing with the self that's in the way. Lord, that we might bear more fruit. Lord, accomplish your work tonight, I pray. Would you take some time to talk to the Lord?